For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. We have Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner McCann, Commissioner Winter, Commissioner Lawler and Akall may join us later. Like the record show that Commissioner Glenn Michael is excused and absent for the meeting this evening. We are now at the Commissioner Communications. Is there any communication from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to staff communication.
Good evening, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager for the City of Beaverton. I do not have any staff communications this evening.
Chair and I, just sorry Chair, to, sorry to interrupt. Just so you know, Commissioner Akall will not be joining us this evening.
Okay, so Commissioner Akall is absent this evening. So we have new business this evening, which is the first item on the agenda is the application for LU 3223-00192, Panzer Mixed Use Development. Case file numbers, DR 32023-00188, PS 22023-00189, and ZMA 32023-00191. The applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and applicable Beaverton Code provisions. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing tonight are Development Code Sections 40.03.1, Facilities Review Committee, 40.15.15.6(c), Planned Unit Development, 40.20.15.3(c), Design Review 3, 40.15.15.5(c), Preliminary Subdivision, 40.90.15.2(c), Tree Plan 2, 40.97.15.1(c), Zoning Map Amendment. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal the decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require that Commissioners make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any Commissioner have any potential or actual conflict events, interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? We will start, yes?
May I just interject? This is Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. Can we please note for the record that Commissioner Lawler has joined us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Going to do that as part of the next piece, but that's fine. So as far as potential or actual conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits. We will start with Commissioner Ellis.
No to all three.
Okay, now Commissioner Lawler, welcome.
Thank you. No to all three on the questions.
Okay, Commissioner McCann.
No to all three.
Okay, and Commissioner Winter?
I did a site visit prior to this particular date, anticipation of this showing up. And I've had, I had no contact.
Okay, and it is no to all three for me. Does any member of the audience wish to question a Commissioner about ex parte contacts, site visits, or challenge the right of a Commissioner to participate in this hearing? Okay, let the record show, no response. The order of the public hearing tonight is as follows. The staff will give a presentation followed by Commissioner Questions of Staff. The applicant will then be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by the Commissioners' Questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each, followed by members of the public opposed to the application may speak for up to five minutes each. And then members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will have up to five minutes each to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments. So we now can begin with the staff report, or staff presentation, sorry.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
All right, just give me one moment here, I'm gonna get my... All right. Good evening Commissioners and Chair and I, my name is Elena Sasson. I'm an Associate Planner with the City of Beaverton. And the item before you this evening is the Panzer Mixed Use Development. Before we get started, staff would like to briefly draw your attention to a supplemental memo you should have received earlier today. The purpose of this memo is to address minor revisions to two Washington County conditions of approval. The revisions are intended simply to provide clarity to those conditions. Staff also want to acknowledge a memo shared with the Commission on November 9th regarding staff's new approach to conditions of approval in general. This new approach will typically result in fewer conditions than we may be used to seeing. And this proposed development under review tonight is the first land use application to come before the Commission utilizing this approach. If there are any questions related to this new approach, we have Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager, and Jenna Fox, current Planning Manager, with us here this evening to help answer any questions, should you have them, after staff's presentation. All right, so we will begin by providing a brief overview of the proposal and required land use applications. The subject site is an existing plant nursery known as Panzer Nursery. And the proposed development is a mixed-use development consisting of 533 residential dwelling units, as well as over 17,000 square feet of commercial space. The required land use applications to achieve this are Planting and Development, Design Review 3, Preliminary Subdivision, Tree Plan 2, and Zoning Map Amendment, which we will get into in just a moment. The subject site is located in the northwest section of Beaverton, within the Five Oaks Triple Creek Knack, at the intersection of West Baseline Road, Southwest Stepping Stone Drive, and Southwest 185th Avenue. This site was annexed earlier this year, in February 2023, and city zoning of Station Community High Density Residential or SC HDR and Station Community Multiple Use, SCMU, were applied to the site at that time. The site abuts Washington County zones directly to the south and to the east, and it's also located across Southwest 185th Avenue from properties that are located within Washington County's jurisdiction, but also within the city of Hillsborough. Also earlier this year, the site received preliminary approval to consolidate the eight lots, which make up the site currently, into three lots. That plat is currently under review with the Washington County Surveyor's Office. And one of the conditions of approval for this proposal is that that final plat be recorded prior to any site development permit being issued for this proposed development. The entire subject site is proposed to be developed as a planned unit development. And this is a special kind of conditional use that permits modifications to development standards in the underlying zone or zones. And it's also a mechanism which responds to or allows for applicants to respond to specific qualities, site-specific qualities, that allow for more innovative design that might not otherwise have been permitted or would have required a number of variances or adjustment applications to achieve. It also allows for different approaches to open space. In this case, the applicant has proposed to provide more active open space than would have typically been required in lieu of providing more overall, general open space. And that flexibility allowed this proposal to provide denser development with a variety of housing types, commercial spaces around a Main Street-like design, a plaza, and other active open spaces throughout the site. A Design Review application is needed to review the proposed building designs, building construction, the site circulation, parking, as well as landscaping and lighting. The applicant has elected to address Design Review Guidelines only. Therefore, a Design Review 3 application is necessary. The Design Review 3 application is applicable to the mixed-use buildings, the residential-only multi-dwelling buildings, the townhomes, but it does not apply to the single detached dwellings. To facilitate the proposed development, which includes large lots for the mixed-use and residential-only multi-dwelling structures, as well as smaller individual lots for the townhomes and single detached dwellings, the applicant is proposing a preliminary subdivision to create 187 new lots on the site. The site is mostly covered by greenhouses and ancillary structures for the existing plant nursery. Therefore, there aren't very many trees that are actually planted on the site. But the applicant has proposed to remove 16 community trees to accommodate the proposed development. And although mitigation is not required for community trees or for the removal of community trees, the applicant's plans show that approximately 472 new trees are proposed to be planted on the site with this proposed development. So upon annexation, the city zones SC HDR and SCMU were applied to the site. These zones are both multiple use and have very similar development standards, but have some minor variations in the uses that are permitted within these zones. The applicant's proposal includes modifying the location of these zones on a site in a way that aligns with the proposed development and the new proposed property lines. One of the approval criteria for a quasi-judicial zoning map amendment is that the proposal demonstrate compliance with applicable comprehensive plan policies. And in review of the policies, as well as the proposed changes, staff found that the proposed zoning amendments met the intent of those comprehensive plan goals and policies for this area and the proposed zones. In summary, staff finds that the proposal meets all applicable approval criteria and recommends approval of the Panzer Mixed Use Development, subject to the conditions of approval that were in the staff report dated November 8th, 2023, as well as they were revised in the supplemental memo dated November 15th, 2023. And with that, thank you, and staff is open for any questions.
Okay, do any Commissioners have questions for staff? Okay, well, got off easy tonight. We can, I guess, move on to the applicant's presentation. The applicant will now have 20 minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourself and stating your name and address for the record.
Hi there, good evening, I'm Pam Verdidero with New Home Company. My address is 15455 Northwest Greenbrier Parkway, Suite 240, that's Beaverton, Oregon 97006. I'd like to thank the staff for putting together the staff report and the presentation this evening. I think that was well put together and really says a lot of what we're gonna go into here, but we just want to give a little bit more color to the Panzer Nursery development. I'll give a brief introduction to the project and then turn it over to Laura Standridge with Standridge Design. The Panzer Nursery site is a unique site in that it is, you know, really right at the corner of 185th and Baseline. And unique in that it also borders to single-family neighborhoods, to the east and to the south. Because of the location, it was important for us to create a neighborhood that would complement its very visible corner and also the high-density designation being so close to transit, but also complement the existing two neighborhoods that it's bordering. For this reason, you're gonna see higher density towards the corner and 185th, as well as walkable pathways to transit, along with sort of a promenade, if you will, of shops and services. And then from there, kind of transitioning into a little bit less density with the townhome for sale product, as well as alley-load, single-family detached, and then traditional, single-family detached as they border both those two single-family neighborhoods. With this development particularly, we had the ability to go denser, taller, and it was our desire to design the neighborhood first, the housing second, so that we could offer several different housing opportunities within this area and create a walkable neighborhood for folks that could, you know, walk across the way to services, catch the bus, catch the Max train, but still host a number of parking spaces for folks that are living within the mixed-use area and also folks that will drive from outside the area to shop there. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Laura Standridge, so she can get into our presentation.
I'm Laura Standridge, Civil Engineer and Project Manager at Standridge Inc. Address is 703 Broadway, Suite 610, Vancouver, Washington, 98660. Thank you Pam, that was a great introduction to the project. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see it?
Yes, we can see the screen.
Okay. The Panzer development is, as discussed, at the intersection of Baseline Road and 185th Avenue. It has been a nursery, a functioning nursery, that was started in the 1960s. And over time, this site has been covered in gravel and asphalt and greenhouses, and it's been a thriving business and a central part of this area. But as you can see, there's been quite a bit of development that has grown up around it, and the Panzers are retiring. And this site is an opportunity to bring more community to this area. You can see the greenhouses and the gravel and the asphalt.
I wanted to quickly interrupt. I don't know, we, all we're seeing is the introductory cover slide.
Okay.
I don't know if you're advancing, so.
I am advancing without you. All right. Any other information?
Okay.
So you can see that the site is mostly covered in greenhouses and gravel and asphalt and so forth. And the frontage improvements on Baseline are a very narrow, curvy sidewalk. 185th isn't much better. And then you can see development has grown up around it. There's quite a bit of housing, some commercial areas, school, Max Transit Station was just to the northwest. And the site, this site actually doesn't have a maximum density requirement, and the buildings can be as tall as 100 feet. But that's not what we're trying to do here. We're trying to create a community, a livable place that, you know, is more of a destination as opposed to a place that you go to and sleep at night. We have an apartment complex here, multifamily, with lots of open space and single-family attached, and then we've got quite a variety of single-family detached homes. 185th right now, you can see the frontage improvements are very limited. We're gonna, going to be adding a sidewalk, landscape strip. Stepping Stone has no sidewalk at all. We'll be adding a 10-foot-wide sidewalk and a seven-and-a-half-foot landscape strip, plus lighting. And then Baseline has this narrow, curvy sidewalk, and we'll be widening it and adding trees and constructing a turn lane into the site. The site itself has been designed to have plazas, gathering spaces throughout. There's going to be commercial, ground floor commercial along the two main streets, hopefully shopping and restaurants. There'll be parks and trails throughout the entire community. Pedestrian access will be all the way through the community and around the entire project. And then of course, housing will be, single-family homes, townhomes, commercial first floor with residential above and multifamily. The multifamily buildings have quite a few varieties, and they underweight to provide more of a multi-building look. These two are the residential-only buildings. And then we have the commercial, the commercial buildings as well. Single-family attached townhomes. We have the contemporary French style, as well as modern farmhouse. And then we have a variety of single-family detached as well. And that is basically my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Ellis already has his hand up with questions.
Sorry, sorry to jump the gun on you.
Yeah, that's fine.
I didn't see it in the planned photos there. Do you have the intersections on both the, what was that, the west side to 185th and the north side to Baseline? Are those, are those gonna be traffic signaled, or how are those gonna be set up?
The site collector is at 185th and what we call Street A in the plan right now will be in a signalized intersection. And then the intersection at Baseline will be a stop.
Okay, and sorry, signalized meaning traffic signal?
Yeah.
Green, yellow, red?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, I'm trying to picture in my head, would that be, would that be three lights back-to-back, pretty tight, pretty tight there between that and Stepping Stone, and then the actual Baseline and 185th intersection?
Based on the traffic analysis, it was required that the 185th and Street A intersection had a signal. Maybe Chris Bramer, our traffic engineer, can actually speak to that. You having audio problems, Chris?
Hi, this is Chris Bramer, yes, having button problems, but hopefully it's working now. Chris Bramer from Kittleson Associates, mailing address is 851 Southwest 6th Avenue, Suite 600. That's Portland, Oregon 97204. Yes, we will have signals in succession on Baseline, or excuse me, on 185th. And to Laura's point, we have been working closely with Washington County to make sure those signals are appropriately spaced. And in fact, the one we're being installed at the intersection of the Collector and 185th is on the city and county's transportation system plan. So that putting in a traffic light or signal at that location is actually fulfilling what the long-range plan about the county and the city were. I can elaborate, but I don't wanna bore you with details, so I'll stop there and see if you have any further questions.
No, yeah, I got you, I appreciate that. Would you mind sharing your screen one more time that included the more detailed view that had the street, the internal streets, the streets A and B there?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, interesting. If the, if the traffic teams have already analyzed it, that's good. And, and I, you know, I'll defer to them on that. It just kind of bewilders me that they would accept three back-to-back lights in such a tight space like that. Okay.
Hey, do any other Commissioners have questions of the applicant? I'm seeing none, which means we can move on to public testimony. Thank you for the presentation this evening, I appreciate it. We are now in the public testimony portion. If you'd like to stop sharing, that'd be good, too. Thanks. We are now in the public testimony portion of the agenda. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those opposed to the application, followed by those neither in favor nor opposed. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Verbal testimony that includes profanity or obscenity may be terminated without additional warning. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. Do we have anybody? Yes. We have Nikki? Nope. We have Haley Alves has raised their hand. We'll start there. Haley, if you'd like to speak?
You, oh, you were unmuted. Should be able to speak now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you all. Hi, yes, my name's Haley Alves. I'm a representative with the Carpenters Union, and thank you for your time tonight, Commissioners. I just wanna take a few moments to share some important information about some things that I've observed in the community of Beaverton and beyond. Labor brokers are individuals that provide labor but operate outside of the law. They work with a vulnerable population, often undocumented folks, and exploit this unfortunately to their advantage. These workers have no recourse when they're not paid, paid late, or as we'll often see, charged a fee for working. These folks, if they are paid on a check, it's often a check cashing fee that kicks back to this labor broker. As we so often see, they're paying cash under the table. And the problem with cash, when you're paid that way, you aren't able to prove your income. You can't finance a car or rent an apartment. Never mind purchase a home for your family, anything of that sort. So we frequently see projects like this.
Can we, could we pause your testimony for a minute? Our city attorney raised her hand, sorry.
Yeah, thank you Chair and I. I just want to reiterate that the public testimony must be directed at the criteria on the application. So if Ms. Alves would direct her testimony towards that applicable criteria, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. We frequently see projects such as this one awarded to contractors that allow these illicit activities, like what I've outlined here, to occur on their job sites. And if we don't take active measures to fight against that, I can promise you that we'll see this on this project here. on this project here once that starts. So, um, please do your part to do the right thing for the workers and for this community and require that this developer use a responsible contractor. And we're just here to educate you, so, um, hopefully you can make the best decisions moving forward and we'll be back again to, to see what happens with this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I realize I forgot to read a portion of the script, so, um, I'm going to do that and then I will call on, um, Nikki. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, but you will be up next. So now it's time for the public testimony. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. So now I will call on Nikki. You're unmuted. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Commission. My name is Nikia Hunter, and I am a community voice speaking for workers experiencing harm, extortion, and unsafe work conditions, and wage theft, to name a few. I am here tonight speaking in place of workers who build projects such as the Panzer Development, yet can't afford to take their families to them once they open, and can only dream of one day renting or owning. Making ten to twenty cents apiece for the work that they do, as I hear many of the workers tell their stories. Illicit practices by contractors, allowing these practices to get the project ahead of schedule, but most of the time just to get it over the finish line. Crews are rotated and bound by the monies owed to them. They give up ten to twelve hours of their day, working in severe elements sometimes with little to no job safety, and driven by the same goal to provide for their families. They show up and accept less, work for free, live in fear, and are extorted and dehumanized. All of the while, they have the same hope that people who decide what projects are built in their neighborhood will use responsible contractors. That community benefits will mean that they benefit communities in a whole aspect, not just to check the boxes of inclusivity or to get community funds applied. Subsidizing family issues are talked about a lot amongst communities.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt again. Our city attorney raised her hand.
Go right ahead.
Again, um, I just want to reiterate that, um, the testimony tonight needs to be directed toward the criteria of the application. These are land use criteria that are, um, listed, listed on the, um, notice and on the, um, Planning Commission's website in the staff report. Um, other issues may be important, but this is the, um, land use application hearing, and the testimony needs to be directed toward that criteria. Thank you.
Yes, not a problem. We just want to make sure that the land that is being used, that belongs to the communities, is being developed with a conscious respectful mind to the communities that they serve. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll clarify also, like, we as the Planning Commission have no say in the contracting of this project. Um, so we cannot regulate that from our, from our, from our body. So we have Jay Lucas next. You may, um, um, you are now unmuted.
All right, yeah, thank you. My name is Joshua Lucas, and I am with the Western State Carpenters Union. And, uh, today I have the pleasure of speaking to you about the importance of apprenticeship programs on the Panzer Development. Uh, apprenticeship. Apprenticeships is a time-honored tradition that combines the on-the-job training with classroom instruction, providing individuals with skills and knowledge they need to succeed in their chosen field. One of the greatest benefits of apprenticeship is that it offers individuals opportunity to learn from professionals.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but again, testimony needs to be, um, geared towards the approval criteria. This is not an open forum this evening. So please tailor your comments to the approval criteria that we spoke about earlier.
Yeah, we're just trying to get the point across that it is important that we do use our apprenticeship out there on the Panzer Development. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to be short, but, um, we have one more person with their hand up, Jesus Cicada. Uh, you may, you are unmuted. You may speak.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Jesus Alceda. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. Uh, this project raises many concerns. I mean, we're, I'm not against it, but the reason it raises concerns is because projects just like this one, they have been, they, um, they have, there have been a lot of victims, extortion and wage theft. As a Latino in the construction industry, I personally witnessed this. And every day I walk crime scenes. You all know them as job sites, where all these crimes happen. I mean, there's, there's people out there, workers, getting charged one to four hundred dollars just to work on projects just like this. I mean, at this rate, our children will be statistics. There'll be no money for college, possibly live off government assistance because of their parents.
I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but to repeat what we said to previous speakers, please tailor your comments to the approval criteria. This is not an open forum to talk about labor practices.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, if you do have anything else to speak about related to the approval criteria.
Yes, ma'am. So I just strongly encourage to give responsible contractors to have them held accountable for their irresponsible actions and not rush this project. That's all we're asking. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Uh, we have another speaker with their hand up, Javier Santizo.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Javier Santizo. I'm also representative with the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters. And when we talk development and planning, uh, it's important that we plan also that these construction sites are doing and being developed by responsible contractors, so that our schools, our courthouses, our first responders, our fire department, our police department, have the proper funds coming into these communities that are growing and are being developed. When we have irresponsible contractors that pay cash and don't pay the workman's comp and their fair share of taxes for our community.
Excuse me, excuse me, again.
We begin the change here.
Sorry.
At this, we just wanted to bring it to light, and I appreciate the attorney taking notes and the commissioners for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair and I, um, maybe it might be helpful if I reiterate the criteria, uh, just so that it's clear that the criteria that we're talking about that relate to this application are in the Beaverton Development Code. They are, um, section forty point oh three point one, Facilities Review Committee, forty point one five point one five point six C Plan Unit Development, forty point twenty point fifteen point three C Design Review Three, forty point forty five point fifteen point five point C Preliminary Subdivision, forty point ninety point fifteen point two point C Tree Plan Two, and forty nine, and forty point ninety seven point fifteen point one point C Zoning Map Amendment. Uh, that is the criteria that we're referring to, uh, when we're speaking of, um, approval criteria that apply to the application, so, uh, for anybody testifying, please direct your testimony towards those criteria specifically. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, do we have any other testimony in favor of the application this evening? If so, please raise your hand or press nine. I'm seeing none. Do we have any testimony in opposition to the application this evening? Please raise your hand or press nine. Okay, I am seeing none again. Do we have anybody who would like to speak neither in favor nor opposed to the application this evening? Again, press nine or raise your hand, uh, to alert us. Okay, uh, yes, we have Bruce W. Please, as a reminder, please state your name and address for the record as well. Uh, you are unmuted now.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can.
Okay, yeah, um, Bruce Wodorski, uh, uh, one eight four eight five, Southwest Stepping Stone Drive, um, Unit Six Three. And I just, uh, wanted to express, um, neither failure nor against. I haven't reviewed, uh, a whole lot of everything. I believe commercial, um, properties are also being developed here, but I, I didn't really see much, uh, about those, just about the apartment complexes. And I'm not sure if, uh, these commercial properties have already been accounted for, uh, what kind of businesses are moving into those locations. Um, and I, I think that would be very important to, to the community to, to know those things.
Okay, the applicant will be able to address the types of businesses when they do their rebuttal testimony. Um, the commercial is all within the ground floor of, um, some of the multifamily buildings, so some of the apartment buildings. Um, if there's, uh, is, would anybody else like to speak this evening, uh, that we have not called on? Okay, seeing none. Um, we can now move on to the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. Please keep your comments focused on issues raised during the public testimony, and please do not provide any, um, new evidence. Do, um, sorry. So the applicant may speak. Got too many windows open?
Hi, this is Pam. Um, to answer the question with regards to the retail, I know we're not screen sharing any longer, but the four buildings that face the townhome, um, on the main streets will have ground floor retail. Each building is approximately, um, four thousand square feet or so. And, um, at this time, we don't know specifically what type or what businesses by name will be there. Um, very similar to another development that we, uh, built, uh, just down off of Toowleton Valley Highway and Murray Boulevard, a redevelopment site there in which we, there's services, basically, um, restaurants, um, dental, basic services that, um, the surrounding area and residents would benefit from. Um, not so much, um, franchisees, so to speak. These are more entrepreneurial-type local businesses, restaurant owners, things like that. Um, so that would be typically the types of, um, commercial tenants that would be, um, at this location.
Great, thank you. Um, so with that, um, does the staff have any final comments this evening?
Thank you, Chair. And I know, no other comments from staff. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, with final comments complete, we will close the public hearing. At its standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. I will start with Commissioner McCann.
Um, thank you. I, I, in hearing the, uh, presentations and reading through the materials, uh, it seems to me that the project meets the criteria and is in approval.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Winter.
Yeah, it's a massive project, a lot of moving pieces. I think the app did a fantastic job of addressing all the issues that they needed to address. And the nine-page supplemental we got today also addressed some of the questions that I thought we need to be impressed and clarified as well. It's all great.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ellis?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm aligned with the other commissioners. Um, the, the transportation analysis is, is a massive document, so I was trying to flip through that and, and, and further look into it. I, I still have a, just a personal bewilderment about having three lights in less than a quarter mile, um, between baseline and Alderwood on one eighty-fifth and, and having spent my formative youth living on the northwest corner of that intersection, um, it just feels weird, but it looks like it meets the requirements and, and, and I can't argue with that. Completely out of scope of saying whether or not this meets the requirements or not. I also hear the concerns of the public participants today and appreciate where they're coming from.
And Commissioner Lawler, I think you dropped off for a bit. I'm not sure if the...
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I had a massive computer crash, so I'm on my phone now. Um, but, um, I, um, I could just speak to the fact that I think the, um, I think staff did a great job analyzing the, uh, various moving parts in this. And I thought the staff report was very clear. I really, um, I think, uh, staff did a great job on it. And I think that, um, you know, considering some of the, the one letter that we received about, uh, the individual, um, not being, um, happy with the development, I think, but the, the location of this site right next to a Max, uh, station really demands that we have the density that's proposed here. And I think that the project does a good job of pushing the density closer to the Max station and then, um, acknowledging the single-family residential on the south and east sides of the project. So, um, I do believe it meets the criteria for approval, and I think it's going to be a great project. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And I generally concur with my fellow commissioners, although I'm disappointed it's not denser than it is just with our housing, um, crisis we're in. Um, I think it meets the approval criteria, and I think the open space provided is a good balance. Um, so with this, um, is there a motion?
Yes.
I'd be happy to, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so I move to approve application LU three two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero one nine two. The Panzer mixed-use development, uh, including DR three two zero three dash zero zero one eight eight, PS two 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 zero two three dash zero zero one eight nine, PUD three two zero two three dash zero zero one eight seven, TP two two zero two three dash zero zero one nine zero, and CMA three two zero two three dash zero zero one nine one. Um, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report dated November nine, or excuse me, November eight, two thousand twenty-three, and the supplemental memo dated November fifteen, two thousand twenty-three. And as stated by staff, or sorry, and I direct the staff to prepare a final decision and order based on the findings in staff reports and the entire record.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann moved and Commissioner Ellis seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none. I'll do a vote by roll call. Uh, Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so motion passes unanimously. Uh, the Planning Commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal the decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. We are adjourned at seven twenty this evening. We appreciate everybody who participated this evening. Thanks.